All right, I've got three o'clock. We're going to call our meeting to order. My name's Brad Dial. I'm the current board chair for the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. It's Wednesday, May 29th. It's three o'clock on the year of our Lord, 2019. I'm going to call our meeting to order. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call.
Barnes?
Here.
Bauer?
Here.
Chaplin?
Here.
Cho? Farren? Hannan? Dial?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Our next item is approval of our agenda for today's meeting. I'll ask for a motion in a second after your review.
I move the agenda to be approved as distributed.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve our agenda for today's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Audience participation. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address. This is an opportunity to make a statement to the board of trustees as a whole. We do not answer questions. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. The countdown clock will display your remaining time. Anyone like to make a comment to the board? Please come forward. State your name and address. You can go to that microphone right there.
Sure.
Push the button down there. There should be a button in front of you. Is it on? Okay.
Testing, okay. My name is Akila Abdallah. My address is 1120 Centennial Drive. Oh, sorry. And...
You said 1120 Centennial?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I just came today because I was told that there was a board meeting today, and I wanted to address concerns about connections when it comes to the bus, and also if there's any way that we can insert like some kind of bus system where like when one bus is behind and we know they're supposed to connect with another one, are we able to like put another bus in place to make sure that those people are getting to where they need to go? And also, when it comes to transfers, we're supposed to let the driver know, hey, we're supposed to get on this bus. Can you put in a transfer? There's been many times where I've caught the bus and it just hasn't happened, and the bus has not connected, so.
Okay. Carl, would you like to address your concerns?
Sure. Thanks for coming. Yeah, all of those we can address, I think, in a satisfactory fashion for you.
Okay.
I would like to introduce you to Amy Snyder, who is our chief of staff, but actually she's just promoted to that position from the customer service director position.
So she's the perfect person for you to talk to, and she can help you with each of those
items.
Okay.
So if you'd be willing to, Amy, I don't know if you can step out and help her off to the side so we can continue, if that's okay.
Yes.
But I think we can address your issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation today. We appreciate it. Any other comment from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of our minutes. First minutes we'll talk about are our special board meeting minutes from April 15th, 2019. If you'd like to review those in your packet, I'll ask for a motion second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special board meeting minutes of April 15th, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Our next item is the regular board meeting minutes from April 24th, 2019. Motion second on those.
And move we approve them?
It's been moved to approve the regular board meeting minutes from April 24th, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. And finally, our special board meeting minutes from April 30th, 2019, at the Champaign City Council Study Session for the Yards.
And move we approve them?
It's been moved... You were for the Yards? We were here. Study session is when everybody was here. Yeah. Okay. All right. You weren't there. Okay. I'm sorry. Excuse me. It's a different meeting. I don't see, I don't know that I was there. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I didn't look at that myself, so. Our next item is communications. John Dwyer, who's the coordinator for the Champaign County Emergency Management Agency. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CUMTD Board of Trustees and CUMTD staff, thank you for your time this afternoon. This is a long time coming. What I want to do is share with you the work that MTD does or supports the community in January 30th, we had extreme temperatures, cold temperatures of wind chills of below 40 degrees, negative 40 degrees, and a lot of the public places where folks take refuge were closed that day. But as always, MTD stepped up and said, hey, we'll give free bus rides to those who need it to stay out of the cold. It may sound like a small gesture, but it's a big thing for people to rely on that kind of transportation, because we had a lot of public buildings and places that were closed. So there wasn't, there weren't a lot of options for those folks to take time out of the inclement, or places take out of that inclement or other. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the community. Like I said, there's a lot of things that you all do that maybe you're not aware of, whether it's supporting, you know, Champaign Fire, Urbana Fire with a bus to keep people warm, or even cool, depending on the weather, or even just this last week, supporting the Willard Airport Drill to move, mock victims around and things like that. So I just wanted to personally take the time to say thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you taking the time to come and speak to us today.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great afternoon. Our next item will be our managing director report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This report is for April of 2019. As was expected, ridership has dropped as a result of the significant reroutes that we have ongoing due to the EMCOR project, and so we had a drop of 6.9% from last year, which is right around what we were expecting. The operating revenue was 2.1% above April of 2018, and year-to-date operating revenue was 1.9% below 2018. The April operating expenses were eight tenths of a percent below April of 2018, and the operating expenses for the year are 1.7% above last year. The operating revenues are $690,225 above budget, while operating expenses are $3.9 million under budget. Moving on to the notes, I communicated this to you each already, but I just want to reiterate publicly that the district has received its certification for the ISO 9001 and 14001 standards. And so those two systems are merged, and we have one certification for both standards now. And I just want to give a shout out to the, I'm not going to read them all, but the list of people, but really all of staff and all the employees, not even just staff, but every employee to some degree has participated in this process. And it is, it's a mammoth undertaking, and the certification was a difficult certification, a difficult audit. But on the closing meeting, the auditors told us that their certifying agency that certifies worldwide recently did a study and determined that when they send auditors to locations to do these audits, that on average, they find two findings per auditor per day. So under these circumstances, we had two auditors here for five days, and so that would have resulted in 20 findings on average, and we had two findings. So that is, I really want to stress that, that that's dramatic, and that's the result of a lot of fantastic work. And so if you see Jane, and Amy, and Eric, and Kirk, and all of them, really give them some kudos, because it was a lot of work. And then with that, I'm just going to move on to introducing Corbin Fig, who is sitting behind me, and I'd like to throw the microphone over to him so that he can just give a brief introduction of himself. So, Corbin?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Corbin Fig. I'm the new chief operating officer here. I just came here from Oshkosh, Wisconsin, where I was the operations manager. I started off my career in public transit as a bus operator when I was going to school at Indiana University, and I've been working my way up ever since then. So I'm happy to be here. I'm excited. There's a lot of great things going on. So if you ever have any questions or want to chat, just reach out. I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Welcome, Corbin.
We're very excited to have Corbin here. He's got a lot of great experience, and I think he's going to be a good fit. So with that, I will take any questions through page 44 of the board packet.
Margaret?
This isn't a question. It's a comment. I think this idea of allowing the riders options, choices in designing their, you know, in the trip planning program is just an excellent idea. I don't know who thought of it, but they should get a pat on the back.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that along.
Bruce?
Carl, the year-to-date operating revenue down 1.9%. Do we know if the weather that we just heard was so ferocious affected any of that ridership?
No, no, that's not due to an operational aspect. Primarily, that's due to the loss of some tenants that we used to have and some of our excess property, that we were deriving some revenue from those leases. But as you know, Carl moved out of our facility, and fasteners moved out of the building that they were operating from in downtown Champaign. So that makes up most of the revenue loss.
But do we know how much cold weather affects, how much certain amount of cold weather affects ridership?
Well, I am not going to be able to give you a specific percentage off the top of my head. I can tell you this, that cold weather actually improves ridership to a certain point, until it gets to a certain, yeah, at a certain threshold, then people just aren't going out. And so we certainly saw that on that day, I mean, the day that John mentioned in January was an extremely low ridership day. But on the other hand, the people that did ride really depended on us and needed that warm ride, so it was important for us to be there. But generally, cold weather, snowy weather, that kind of thing, will enhance ridership. As you know, about 95% of our fare-derived revenue is prepaid, so it's through contracts with like the university, or people have an annual pass or a monthly pass. So the weather on individual days generally won't change the revenue too much, because at a maximum, only 5% of our revenue is cash coming in through the fare box. So that's pretty static.
Just ridership?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess that's what I really meant. So you know where I'm getting at. It's just, I want to always do this statistical analysis of what affects ridership. And EMCOR is certainly part of it.
Yes.
Weather's certainly part of it.
Right. So I will say, in January, when that cold day was, and it was more than one day, but that cold snap that we had, our ridership was up in January from the January the previous year. So these statistics are relevant to April, which can be a rainy month, but generally speaking, the weather is not changing ridership too much. However, we were full in on the EMCOR reroutes, and that's the major impact to our ridership.
It really is affecting everything on campus.
It sure is. Yep.
Dick?
Carl, with the two new hybrids coming in, first of all, are they in service yet? And what are the percentages hybrid versus the diesels and so forth of our fleet?
I'm sorry, could you, I heard the first part, but I didn't catch the second part of what you said.
Just wondering what are percentage of buses that are hybrids versus diesel and four.
Gotcha. Okay. So we are receiving two new vehicles. One of them has arrived and is on property, I believe it arrived yesterday.
The one's here.
And, oh, and the other one arrived today. So both of them are in. Now, the maintenance department will begin their sign-off process to make sure that they are in the condition that they need to be to go into service. They have a little bit of work that they need to do to add the radios to them, or, I don't know, are you installing the fareboxes?
Yeah.
Fareboxes, and just a couple of minor things like that. And then they'll be ready to go into service in about two weeks-ish. And then your second question was the percentage of hybrids of the overall fleet. With these two buses, we are now at 85% hybrid.
And soon we'll have the hydrogens?
Yeah, so the fuel cell buses will change how we have to report to those numbers. It was either diesel-electric hybrid, or just diesel, and now we have a third, we'll have a third category after that. So, yeah, it'll make things more fun.
Anything else for Carl? I will mention, just in reference to the ISO recertification, I know it's a tremendous amount of work for all the staff, but I would recognize, as Carl did, Amy Snyder, Jane Sullivan, Eric Broga, Kirk Kirkland, Chuck Wilson, Drew Bargman, and Josh Dome, who have done the bulk of the work and organization for that process, so congratulations on that. Anything else for your report, Carl?
Nope.
All right. Our first item as an board administration committee of the whole is the fiscal year 2020 draft budget.
Okay, we have in the, Dick, did you want to do an intro on it, or do you want me to just take it? Okay. In your board packet is the proposed budget that will go on display, or is now on display for the public to view on our website and in the board packet. And we've, I've already spoken to each of you about this, and we've gone over it, but just a couple of items to note, mostly for the public. This year's budget, operating budget is 6% higher than last year, but I want to point out that that's not just a wildly out-of-control budget, that there are some changes to the way the budget is put together and formulated this year that show up, that are causing that dramatic percentage change. Normally, we would see a 2%, 2.5%, 3% increase. Our wages are only increasing 2.5% this year, and that's district-wide, staff and hourly. But this year, our EMCOR contribution has been included in our operating budget as opposed to our capital budget, so that's nearly a million dollars of expenses that are now included in the operating budget that weren't in last year's. But at the same time, because that's a defined capital project, it will end, and when the project is over, then that will not show up in the operating budget anymore. In addition to that, we are continuing to operate some 2003 and older-than-that, even 2001 vehicles that are becoming more and more expensive to operate, and so maintenance has requested to budget some additional funds to keep those buses in a state of good repair so that they are safe and in as good condition as we can make them. And so there was a one-time increase to the maintenance budget to accommodate that. Those are the main things. There are a couple of other things that are short-term or new aspects, like some governmental accounting standards board, GASB rules, that are changing the way that we put some things on our balance sheet. It's something that all governmental entities are having to do. In my personal opinion, they're not real numbers. There are some things that we're now required to put on our balance sheet that are estimates of things far, far, far down into the future, like unfunded pension liabilities and other pension benefits and things like that. But we're required to do it, so they're in this year's budget. So I mostly just want to remind everybody that a budget is a plan. Just because this budget is 6% higher than last year does not mean that we will spend 6% more than we did last year. We will remain fiscally responsible and conservative, but this gives us an outlay, a plan for how we will proceed for the next year.
Any questions for Carl on the budget? Matt?
Can you refresh the debt service and interest for me? That one seems to be significantly higher, but that could be part of the accounting, or I'll let you explain.
Sure. No, that's a great question. I should have, I should have just mentioned that on my own. So I talked about the operating budget. The capital budget is, on the whole, it's a separate budget from the operating...
You're on page 51, correct?
Well, it's...
Page 51?
It's 45 through 58. The detail of the debt service is on page...
51.
Let me get that for you. It is on page 51, yes. You were correct. I was not looking at that page.
That's okay.
The debt service and capital, those are all capital projects. They have different funding sources, but they're all capital projects. So it's difficult to look at a capital budget from one year to the next and say it's, you know, X percent more this year, or Y percent less than last year, or two years ago, because it's just very project-dependent. It absolutely depends on what capital projects are occurring in a year. So that, by its definition, is going to be very lumpy. It's going to be very up and down. Some years are high, some years are low. When EMCOR is done, all the EMCOR payments will drop out of our budget, and so we won't be making those anymore. But we have the hydrogen fuel cell project, and so those are, you know, those payments are in this year's budget, and they'll be in next year's budget also. But when that project is done, then they go away, that kind of thing. But we'll have new projects that come on. So the debt service is one funding mechanism that we use for capital projects, and then the other, the lower half of that page, on page 51, are projects that we are funding 100% out of our capital reserve. And so it's all capital projects, just different types of funding mechanisms.
Additional questions for Carl from the board? Linda?
So if our operating costs go up, we still get, then we get more support from the state also?
That is correct. The state operating grant pays for a percentage of our operating expenses. So for every dollar that we spend, that grant pays for 65 cents of that dollar. And so if we spend $10, we get $650 from the state. If it's $100, we get $650 from the state. And so it's percentage-based, not fixed-dollar-based.
Fixed-dollar?
Did I say 100? Yes.
Is that the example?
Yes, not 1,000. Yes.
That would be nice.
That'd be a trick.
So, you know, the impact isn't quite that great then, because we do get these matching dollars, or whatever you call them?
Correct. It is a balanced budget within the confines of how the grant works. Yes.
Anything else for Carl? So we do have incremental changes in some of our funds, and we also have some significant reporting, governmental reporting, things that we're doing that's causing this budget change. Is that accurate?
That is definitely accurate, and the one other item I would add to that is some short-term bumps to it, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right. Well, our budget has been reported, and it's on record, and it's up for review by the public. All right. Our first action item for today is our Unit 4 contract. You have a separate sheet that's outside of your packet that was at your places today. It's got a couple changes on it, so we'll refer to that. And this is for the 2019-2020 Champaign Unit 4 School District Agreement for Transportation. Carl?
Yes. So the sheet that you have before you just corrects the numbers that are on the memo in the board packet. The numbers in the agreement in the board packet are correct, so this just makes those agree with one another. So the total contract amount is $543,405, and the monthly billing over a nine-month period of time will be $60,378. This is for the school tripper service that we provide for Unit 4 for middle school and high school transportation.
No substantive changes to this agreement from last year?
Correct. Just as a reminder, the school district did ask for additional service last year, and so last year was a change from the year before it, but this year, that extra service, they did a one-year trial on, and they did ask to include that again in this year, so...
And this is, this the last year of their steps, or is this...
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Dick, go ahead.
Is this very similar to the contract with Urbana Schools?
It is not dissimilar from the agreement with Urbana, but they, there are differences between the two. The Unit 4 agreement is a bit more complicated than the Urbana one. Urbana, there are two schools, one middle school and one high school, and they're right next to each other, and they are right next to our main hub in Urbana. So what, the only thing we charge either school district for are the elements of the service that we provide as a result of having an agreement with them. So Urbana is lucky that they're geographically laid out the way that they are, because much of the service that they get to take advantage of, they don't actually have to pay for. Unit 4, we have two high schools, we've got multiple middle schools, they're spread all over the community, and they have schools of choice. So you could have two kids that live right next door to each other going to exact opposite ends of the community for their middle schools, which feed them into different, which feed them into different high schools. And so there's a lot of complexity to the Unit 4 service, and they still get a great deal, but they end up paying for more service that is a direct result of the agreement with them than what Urbana does. That's probably more of an answer than you wanted, but they're, I mean, the concept is the same, but the scale is very different between the two.
So does Urbana use some of our regular fixed routes?
Yes, and Unit 4 does, too. I don't want to give you the impression that they're not able to take advantages of the service that we already have on the street. They absolutely do. But because they're so geographically spread out, and the nature of the way kids are going to different schools, that causes complexity to the service, and we have to put additional service on the street, we have to put more additional service on the street to accommodate that.
Any other questions for Carl on this item? If not, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the transportation agreement between the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District and the Champaign Unit 4 School District for the 2019-2020 school year. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Unit 4 contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Our next action item is Resolution Number 2019-1. It's to authorize execution of the fiscal year 2020 Downstate Operating Assistance Grant Agreement. Carl?
Sure. This is the aforementioned grant that we were discussing during the budget presentation discussion, and so this is our operating grant that we receive from the State Department of Transportation, and this is the resolution that you passed to authorize us to execute that grant.
Questions on this item? Margaret?
Well, you've probably answered this, and I probably should know it, but why can't we do this less often than annually?
Because the state requires us to do it annually. No, it's not, it's not a stupid question. It's just, it's a simple question to answer. Sometimes we're just required to do things.
It's a statutory requirement. Any other questions for Carl on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call on Resolution Number 2019-1.
Barnes?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Hannan?
Yes.
Dial?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of bank lines of credit.
Okay, this item is... Okay, this item is, sorry, Margaret, it also is an annual thing, or has been an annual thing, although you'll be, I'm sure you are pleased as punch to hear that this year, a bank proposed a three-year agreement for a borrowing mechanism, which, Matt, this is the funding mechanism that we use to pay for the debt service projects. So we don't carry debt for those for very long. It's just for the duration of the construction of the project. Once the asset goes into service, then we pay those notes off. But we have to borrow the funds during the construction of the project or during the procurement of the project. And so these are the mechanisms that we use to do that. This time around, the bank, like I said, is offering a 36-month agreement as opposed to a 12-month agreement, and because of that, it's a very, very attractive rate on that. So staff is recommending authorization to sign these agreements.
Questions on this item for Carl? Matt?
I noticed it's only up to 16 million, but our debt service for 2020 is 25. Is there a gap to help spend or meet that?
You see some dissonance there between those two months? Well, yes, that is very astute of you and a good observation. So here's the skinny on that. Two things occur. One is that, so we're only borrowing the money during the time that the project is being procured or being constructed, and not all of the projects occur at the same time or in parallel. And so while we may borrow money to buy buses, for instance, once those buses are purchased, we pay that amount off, and that amount becomes available again in the note, in the line of credit. So that's one thing. The other thing is, on the budget sheet for the debt service projects, some of these items, actually, most of these items will be multi-year projects, and so we are budgeting the full amount, but not the full amount will be expended in this year's budget. There will be carryover to the next year's budget. Just as, for instance, because it's on the top of that list, the hydrogen fuel cell, we'll be doing that all throughout FY '20 and into FY '21. And so while there's $14 million budgeted, we will not spend $14 million out of the budget in FY '20. I'm not going to try to guess what we will be able to get to, but let's just say hypothetically we could get to $7 or $8 million as we progress through the construction work of the project, and so we're not taking $14 million out in one lump sum. Does that make sense? It's a great question.
Additional questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to enter into an agreement with First Mid Bank and Trust for annual loan authorization of $16 million.
Mr. Chair?
No, yeah, that's not correct.
Revolving line of credit of $6 million and a straight line of credit of $10 million.
Is it First Mid?
To establish two lines of credit with Prospect Bank is the actual recommended action.
Interestingly, and, oh, I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong, I'm reading the wrong line.
Yes.
That was my error. Sorry, sorry. I stand corrected.
My temperature started to rise. They would have been happy.
Wait, wait.
I was like, oh, what's going on?
All right. So we're looking for a motion to enter into an agreement with Prospect Bank.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded to enter into an agreement for two lines of credit totaling $16 million with Prospect Bank. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item is the boiler replacement contract, which we've almost talked about before. Carl?
Yes, we had this on last month's agenda, and we thought, at the last moment, we thought there was a problem with one of the proposals, and so we deferred action on it. We have since worked through that, and there wasn't a problem. So we're back with the same request that we were going to ask for last month, and that was to award the contract to Mechanical Incorporated. They are the low bidder, and they meet the DBE requirements, and so it's a good proposal. Just as a side note, all of the bids that we received were under what the engineer's estimate was expected to be, and so we feel really good about this. They were clustered very closely together, so we think it's a good proposal.
Questions on this item from the board? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second.
I still move.
It's been moved and seconded to enter into a contract for the boiler replacement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item is the New Flyer contract for hydrogen fuel cell electric buses. I see Ms. Sullivan is at the table.
Thanks.
Please jump ahead.
Yeah, so I'm on page 69. This is, this contract is for the purchase of those two hydrogen fuel cell buses. The amount of the contract with New Flyer is $3,087,084, so that's for the two buses. You can see at the bottom where we are at when we include in the overall budget for the hydrogen fuel cell project. Once we add this bus procurement on, we still have a contract to award for the fueling station and for the facility modifications. Those are, the fueling station, the bids are, the RFP is on the street right now, and we're getting ready, hopefully soon, to release the RFP for the facility modifications. So this is about the buses, though, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jane on this item? Dick, Bruce?
This doesn't include solar cells for the generation of the electricity to make the hydrogen.
No, this is just for the purchase of the buses.
Oh, okay.
Dick?
What's the timing on this project, please?
We're looking at an August, an August 2020 delivery of the buses. The buses kind of have to be the last thing, so hopefully on the street next fall, fall 2020.
We don't nearly need any buses if we don't have any way to fuel them, do we?
No.
Additional questions from the board for Jane? Matt?
I was wondering, is this for two buses? Is this in line with what we normally spend for buses, or is there a premium for, I guess, having this advanced technology of using hydrogen?
They are more expensive than hybrid buses. A hybrid, a 60-foot hybrid is at about 1.1 million.
Anything else as opposed to 1.5?
Yeah, 1.5 per bus.
Anything else, Matt?
And just as a quick side note there, I don't know if you happen to have it with you, Jane, but we do have an estimate on another common alternative fuel vehicle being purchased now nationwide, worldwide, are battery electric buses instead of fuel cell electric buses. Ours are fuel cell electrics at 1.5. The battery electric buses, a 60-foot battery electric bus was...
1.4.
1.4. So we're really not out of bounds too far, and I would also like to note that these are the first two hydrogen fuel cell 60-foot buses to be produced in North America for an in-service contract. The company has made one demo bus before, but these are the first two that they've made for a customer in North America, any company. So the price is expected to come down, but, you know, when you're in the front of the line, you pay more.
You're also the guinea pig. It's okay, we're a leader in the field. Remind me of the advantage for the hydrogen fuel cell. Is it economics, or is it environmental, or some of both, as far as less, fewer, or less fuel cost or impact on the environment?
Yeah, these are zero emission buses, so there are certainly environmental benefits, especially when you compare them to the standard diesel buses and even to the hybrids. The advantage to hydrogen fuel cell buses as compared to battery electric buses is the range. This is a one-to-one replacement of a hybrid or a diesel bus. They can run all the same routes for all the same amount of time. There's no in-route charging, one fueling, just like all of our other buses do. Do you want to add anything, Carl?
Additional questions from the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to enter into a contract with New Flyer for these two hydrogen fuel cell buses.
I move that we approve the contract for the cell, hydrogen fuel cell electric buses with New Flyer as outlined in the proposal.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to enter into a contract for $3,087,084 with New Flyer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Our next item is a procurement manual update. Jane's going to handle that, too.
Yes, thanks. Pretty minor updates to the procurement manual here. We added some documents that will help with our DBE goals and our DBE efforts that you see listed there on page 70. We have also added a new procedure and changed a few procedures, and then the rest of it is job title changes. So everything, I'm sorry, everything that has been changed in the manual is in red.
Okay, and the stuff in blue is just stuff that's in blue?
Those are just links.
Yeah, okay.
That's why they're blue.
So anything that's in red is a language change?
Yes.
Thank you. Board questions on this item?
Jane, how long have we been involved with the DBE requirements?
You know, forever. There are federal and state DBE requirements. We recently had a DBE review where they were able to give us some suggestions on how to make improvements, and that inspired most of these document additions.
But DBs, I'm sort of new at this part of it, but how long has DBE been in existence with regard to MTD?
Boy, I don't know if Fred happens to know the answer to that, but I, so the disadvantaged business enterprise regulations, as Jane mentioned, are federal and state requirements, and they have been around probably since the 70s. So I think for the entire, to some degree or another, for the entirety of the district's existence, though they're frequently changed, updated, tweaked, and so what we're doing today is responding to some changes and some recommendations that we received from the Federal Transit Administration relative to their DBE review, but it's been an ongoing, I think, for the entirety of the district's existence, and if not literally, effectively that long.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Once a business or firm is certified, are they certified forever, or do they check up on them to make sure they're still doing good?
There is a recertification process, and the state handles that, and we rely on the state's DBE list to use for our projects.
So your updates that we've made here are federally based, we're confident that we're accurate from a state standpoint with our document also?
Yeah.
So we're up to date?
Yep.
All right. Additional questions from the board? Matt?
Just for my curiosity, do you have an idea of how many projects last year were completed by DB, or I guess previous years, and has that increased?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's most common for a DB to serve as a subcontractor, and we go through a process, to simplify it a little bit, we go through a process where we create a specific DB goal for each project. So you look, if you know there's going to be plumbing in the project, you look at how many plumbing contractors are in the area, and then you look at how many of those are DBs. That's oversimplifying it, but you look at all of the, you look at the scope of work and all of the subcontracting and contracting opportunities and develop a goal based on that. So for state projects, this is a shift in recent, in the last two years or so, the state is doing that math for us, and they're giving us the goals for our state-funded projects. But for federal projects, they put all of our federal, our projects that will use federal funds together and do that calculation based on any project we're using federal funds on, and then we have a percentage goal that will last a three-year period. So adjustments are made if a new project is added. So it's a little different the way they do it state and federal, but it's based on the work and the DBs available for that work.
I guess to revise, do we know where we stand on that list? Are we leading the pack, or like we are with hydrogen, or are we kind of in the middle?
We don't compare ourselves to other agencies. We, if we don't achieve our goal, we have to conduct a shortfall analysis to determine why we didn't achieve our goal. If a goal is not achieved on a specific project, then the contractor has to prove that they made good faith effort to achieve that goal. So maybe they called all the DBs on that list and no one answered, or something. And if they can prove that they did that, then they can still be awarded the contract. So it's really a contract-by-contract basis, and there's, it's not super informative to compare ourselves year over year or compare ourselves to other agencies, because every project is so unique.
And a lot of the requirements are for the contractor themselves to try to fulfill, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So some of that's out of our control. They do what they can, and then they provide us with the reasoning why they weren't able to accomplish that. Is that accurate?
Absolutely, and our role is to make sure they're following the requirements, the state and federal requirements.
Thank you. Any additional questions on the procurement manual updates from the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion and a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the changes to the procurement manual. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That is our, thank you, Jane, that is our last action item for our meeting today. Informational purposes, our next meeting will be public hearings for the fall revisions to the routes and schedules. The first one of those will be May 30th. That's tomorrow. At six, from 6 to 8 at the Urbana City Council Chambers at 400 South Vine Street in Urbana. And the next meeting will be Thursday, June 6, 2019, from 4 to 6 at Illinois Terminal on the fourth floor at 45 East University, right here in beautiful downtown Champaign. And our next regular board meeting will, and public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget and appropriation ordinance, will be right here in the City of Champaign Council Chambers, Wednesday, June 26, 2019, at 3 o'clock, and we welcome everyone to attend. Any other business for the board? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. It's been moved to adjourn. Have a great day.